Superintendent's report?
Yes, Mr. President. This evening I have Ms. Pat Scheit from Akron Education Association and Dr. McWilliams Woods to review the work that our team of teachers and staff and other administrators have worked in terms of looking at changes to the 100% remote and looking at some options for going to maybe more of a blended model.
Thank you so much, and thank you both for being patient with us. We appreciate you being here.
So it's great to be here tonight to share a couple different themes around our reopening plan and charge that we were given as a collective reopening team. First thing that we want to do is share, I'll share the family survey results that we administered and take a look, some of the board members asked for us to reflect on some of the current COVID data, so we also have slides for that. And then I'll bring in Ms. Scheit to be able to share a summary of our reopening teams that have been working diligently beyond imagine on our reopening plans. And they really haven't stopped since the end of last year because they worked all summer on our potential blended learning opening. And then they continued to meet and work as we've been looking at our remote plan. And then they just continued to keep meeting. So this has been a dedicated group. But, but I wanted to start first with recapping our survey results that we put out to all of our families. And we explained that the board is going to be starting their discernment process for looking at whether we stay remote the second nine weeks of school, which is right around that November, week of November 9th. The actual end of the first nine weeks is November 11th, but November 9th is when the first week that we could look at if you do choose to have a change in instructional delivery, that would start that week. So we sent out a survey that said that you're starting this discernment process at this meeting. And we wanted to get a sense of if you did choose to have a blended model for that second nine weeks, what percentage of the families would choose to have, to stay 100% remote? And which ones would choose the blended learning model? And it was a high level survey because we, we obviously didn't have all of the data out there yet on what the models were going to look like, because that's part of our discussion tonight. And we told families that after we present to the board, after you make your decision on the instructional models, they, we would come back to the families to make a final decision. So the survey really had two goals to it. Two primary goals is to inform the families about the models and about the decision making process and allowing them to contribute to the discussions and let them weigh in. But, so that feedback process is the first part. But then the second part was for us to really look at our own staffing and to start to figure out, let's look at the percentage, at least as of today, what percentage of families are choosing remote versus blended, so that we can start to look at what percentage of our staff would need to be dedicated to 100% remote and how many we would need dedicated to the blended learning model. So in the survey, the, the way that we distributed this and put this out there, our goal was to get 100% participation so that we could really hear from 100% of our families. We, we worked very hard at putting it out during, via emails, very via social media, on our website, but we also did follow-up calls from our connectors and we had all the surveys interpreted for all of our English as a second language families. So we really did a great job getting it out there because we, most importantly, for that second big purpose for the survey was for us to begin to look at our staffing. We had to get 100%. This wasn't just getting a pulse of our families. This was needing specific school by school data. The, the survey areas primarily were around the major decision of if the board voted for a blended model, would you choose to keep your child 100% remote or would you choose blended? But we also asked about transportation. If the, if they would, are normally transported, would you continue to transport? And would you participate in the school meal program? We also had comments that we're going to do a short summary on some of the themes that emerged. And we had, as of yesterday, when we pulled the survey results, we had 15,756 surveys. We are going to keep it open through Wednesday. We originally said we were closing it this weekend. We are going to keep it open for a few more days because we had a number of people say they were going to fill it out, but they just needed a couple more days to get connected. So the, the big picture, the major question that we asked in the survey was if the board votes to bring students physically back in school, would you choose to have your child remain 100% remote or go with blended? And it's 60% chose blended, so 60% of our families, if the board chose to have site-based instruction, would choose to send their child to a blended. And we described blended as at least two days per week, site-based, and the remaining days remote. And then 40% indicated that they would continue having their child stay remote. One interesting fact is with the next day, we released the survey in the evening and the next day, it's been out for a little more than a week. The next day, we had 250 responses when I first looked at the survey and the, the percentage split was exactly the same, 60%, 40%. So it really hasn't changed over the entire week and all the outreach. The, the percentage has remained consistent. This is the grade by grade breakdown. I thought you'd want to see the difference. It starts with preschool at the top and kindergarten. For kindergarten, the percentages, if you can't see it on your screen, is 71% chose blended versus 29% remote. That's the highest percentage out of all the grades. And then first grade was 67% of the families want a blended option and 33% remote. And then you can see just from the light blue is blended, that it goes down almost in each grade level. The only other grade level that pops up is ninth grade at 59% wanting blended and 41% remote. But certainly our youngest, our families with youngest children were the, the respondents with the highest percentage wanting a blended option. I also broke down the data by cluster because I thought you'd want to see if it was consistent across all schools across the city. And you can see there is some variance. Bookdole had the, the lowest percentage, 51% who would choose blended versus 49% wanting 100% remote. And Ellett has the highest percentage wanting blended at 65% and 35% remote. And then all the other clusters, North was the next, the highest in terms of blended with 63% of the families wanting blended and 37% wanting to remain 100% remote. We also asked a question that if the opportunity became possible, would you send your child physically back to school four to five days per week with all the safety guidelines in place? So we wanted to differentiate, was there a big difference between families who wanted blended, for example? Or would it change if we said, what if the, if your child was coming back basically full time, four or five days a week? And you can see that the percentage didn't change drastically, but it was 57% instead of 60% said yes and 43% said no. So if you remember, 60% said they would choose blended overall. So it dropped three percentage points to say 57% would be interested in basically a full-time model. The bus question, we asked if your child typically rides the bus to school, are you planning on having your child ride the bus? A very low percentage said yes. Now we'll see how that sticks, whether that means that if we do have blended, that families are planning on transporting or getting their child there some other way besides the bus. But if this is the case, we may have lower ridership that will help with the social distancing on the bus. And then the, the last questions were about participating in meals, the second nine weeks, will your child participate? Vast majority said yes, they, they would like their child to participate in the school meal program for that second nine weeks of school. Then we did have a comment section. It wasn't required, but at the end of the survey, we asked if they had any comments. The big themes that emerged are on the screen. As you can imagine, the families that chose the 100% remote had concerns about the flu season coming up, the COVID exposure, some of the safety protocols and things like that. The families who chose the blended option had concerns about the social isolation that you heard from some of the families tonight. And, you know, the pros of at least this child could be in school academically for a couple of days. It was that, that theme that kind of were pretty consistent across the two groups of families. Because the board has specifically talked in past meetings about the K2 and the group that, of families that have the highest percentage wanting blended and the concerns about particularly kindergarten students and their ability to access their education, coming in and having to learn computers at the same time. I pulled out what the themes were from the families in that K2 range. And for the most part, if they did choose blended, it was because of the, you know, the inability to stay focused, the student's lack of Chromebook skills, distractions in the home. I don't think any of us would be surprised with those themes that emerged, but I think they're just accentuated for that youngest population. So that's the, the survey results. Why don't I pause for a second and see if there's any questions just specifically about the survey? And then I'll come back to the COVID data that the board members, our board leadership thought it would be good to include.
Do we have any question about the survey instrument itself? If you could also let me know in the chat, because I cannot see all of you on the screen. Please.
Yeah. Mr. President, I've, I've got a quick question with regard to the, those who chose the blended versus remote online. I, I, you know, I know this was said in the survey. I, I just wonder, because I mean, I got a lot of, a lot of emails and questions about, well, went blended, you know, would my student have the same teacher or would they have different teachers? And I know that was, and I know there was language and survey that, that sort of, that was a qualifier around that. But I'm wondering how many folks who for the, and again, I know that we can't know this is just, I'm just bringing this up as something to think about with regard to that question. You know, the, and if, if, if the number of questions I got was any kind of sort of sample size, there were a lot of folks that, that, that were saying, well, yes, I would, I would vote for blended, you know, if my student was going to have the same teacher every day. And even though, and even though the survey said that that wasn't a guarantee, I think, I think people missed that, you know, that, that disclaimer. So, so just any, any comments on that, Dr. Williams Woods?
Yeah, I think, I mean, what a beautiful testament to the, to the strength and power of our teachers in the Akron Public Schools, because that by far was the biggest set of questions that I had in emails and texts and calls from families who are concerned about whatever option they chose, whether it went remote or whether it went blended. They wanted to know, do I get to keep the same teacher? Because that was the deciding factor for them. And we did include in the document that went along with the survey, which had all the information about the safety protocols and about the high-level description of the models, we did clearly right at the top, we said that if you pick remote, you may not have the same teacher. And if you pick blended, you may not have the same teacher. It's actually the same exact language and you'll see that in a second because we're going to use that document to go through the models. That is the tough part when, and it doesn't matter if we switch to blended today for the second nine weeks or whether we do it at the semester in January. When we do it, we are going to, to need to shift to these teachers are teaching remote and these are the teachers that are teaching any type of site-based. And even if we go back, if there's a vaccine and we go back five days a week, right after the winter holidays, there's still going to be families who are going to pick 100% remote and we will still need to reshuffle the caseloads to enable teachers to teach remote and teach the remote students. And some of the teachers will stay with the site-based. We're hoping to be able to, to staff within the buildings to the maximum extent so that we can keep the staff within the building and use the staff there that if there's four teachers and there's enough kids for one of those teachers in a third grade to go to, to go take the remote students and the other three can be site-based. We're hoping that the numbers fall together like that. But in our preliminary look, just at elementary, we know that there's going to be some buildings that in some grades, only five or six families in that particular school, in that particular grade selected remote. And so we may have to combine a couple of classes across a couple of schools to make one class for the remote. But that is true. I think it's important for everyone to understand, it doesn't matter when we do that, if we go to that blended model, we're going to have to make that shift.
Roger, I appreciate that. And then the last question about the survey is, it's related. Did we survey or are we planning to survey the teachers again?
Dr. Hall, if I could jump in here. I agree with what Dr. McWilliams Woods just said. The logistics of staffing are impacted by enrollment and by the status of our, our staff, our teachers. AEA is sending out a survey. We wanted to wait until we presented these potential models to you, but we are sending out a survey starting tomorrow. I should have the results of that survey. I've been talking to many, 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 many teachers and, and we, and we do have teachers across the spectrum, obviously, that, that prefer to remain remote for their reasons, some that would come back five days a week, some in between. We'll have the results of that survey by the end of the week and we're happy to share that with you. I think it'll really inform the, give us a better picture of what the staffing might possibly look like, that we can then line up with what we think our families are choosing to do with the percentage that would stay home and hopefully we can get a better picture at that time.
We also have, at the, the same timing, we'll have a survey that will go out to all of our other support staff too, that supports the classroom so that they get the same opportunity to weigh in and have us get feedback, including our administrators.
Thank you. And I didn't see any other questions in the chat, so I think you're good to keep going.
Thank you.
Ellen, I believe you would more would like an email of this presentation also.
Sure, sure. So the, the second part of this first kind of teeing up our shared leadership teamwork is the COVID rates and looking at our, the Summit County and looking at the district as a whole then, in terms of where we fall. You all have seen this map. This is straight from the Summit County website. They send us the map every couple of weeks so that we can overlay our district then on top of that. So just to, to reorient you to the map, the, this is a cumulative and this is very important to understand that the, the way that Summit County posts this on their site, it's cumulative. So this is all the way from March through today, the case count. So things could be better in certain parts of the community and that's not going to be picked up on this particular map because it is all of the cases that have happened from the beginning of this pandemic. But the case count is on the left-hand side and this is by zip code. So you can see on this map, you know, the center part, this is the entire county, you can see that there's red parts kind of throughout the county that are on that moderately high area. And then there's one of the darker reds in the, you know, just a little bit northern part of the central city. So I'm going to click here so we can zoom in specifically on our district. When you look around the outside of this orange line that goes all the way around, you can see this is, this is actually our border of the district. Okay, the, the black and orange line. So this is the each cluster. So the Ellett cluster is kind of in that middle range here, the 143 to 242 case count. You've got the Kenmore-Garfield is in the lower range, the 90 to 142 case count. The East Cluster is here, which is in that moderate range. The North Cluster, as we've discussed before, is in that high count area. This whole part of the North Cluster that comes down through the central city is on the complete opposite end, which is in that white portion. And then you get out to the Bookdole and the Firestone. Firestone is the next highest in terms of the case count within our district and the Bookdole is in that moderate range in the middle. So when you look, I actually put together the highest cumulative rates. This was compiled by Deborah Fokes' team that works side by side with the Summit County Health Department. The highest cumulative rates in the county are the zip code 44310, which is our North Hill Schools is the highest count area. And then it goes second to Stowe, then to Twinsburg, then Cuyahoga Falls. So these are the, within the county, these are the highest count. And then 44313, which is basically our Firestone Cluster, is primarily represented by that zip code. So in the county, we're at the number one and then number five highest count rate. And then the lowest count rate, when you look at the opposite and the white zip code areas, all of the schools listed here are in that lowest case rate. And then the light blue is on the right-hand side, which lists the schools that are in that second lowest case rate. And again, this is cumulative cases since, since March. So it goes all the way through the summer until now. The other question that the board leadership had asked about is our, the cases in other Summit County schools. We just were looking at some of the districts that are in the high end in terms of cumulative case rate. This is actually scrolling, this is straight from the Summit County Health Department, the dashboard that is required, the, the case rate from the county. And there's 100, out of 115, 115 out of 122 schools, not districts, but 115 out of 122 schools listed have no cases reported. And you can see the various cases, and that's week-to-week reports since the required reporting structure that the governor put in place for the schools. So, so that's the information on the COVID rates. Let me pause again because we're now, Pat and I are now going to go into the, the actual recommendations from the reopening team. So if there's any questions about the COVID rate data, we should probably take those now before we get into the instructional models.
Yeah, I've, I've actually got a question, Mr. President, for Dr. Williams Woods. So, so on the map showing, again, that, you know, the color codes of red, pink, blue, et cetera. Take, for example, the North Cluster where there was an awful lot of, of red there. I just make sure that people who are looking at this, this is not assuming those, that those students attend school in that cluster, right? So for example, they may, they live in that cluster, but they may open enroll into other, into other clusters. Is that, is that, is that an accurate statement?
We actually have, and I think that's a great point, we have, it's about 40%, 45% of our high school students, for example, go to school in clusters outside of their neighborhood school. So just for high school, I know that just because of college and career academies. And that was the percentage before we even started college and career academies. Since we've been an open enrollment district, our families really take advantage of that. And so it's more regional by cluster in terms of the case, but that doesn't necessarily mean that the students living there are actually going to school there.
Roger that. And then a quick follow-up to that. So then, so we have teachers who, for example, art, phys ed, that I think travel from, from school to school, right? So, so I guess, I guess the question there is, you know, are there, do you have a comment or if you, if you will, about, you know, those teachers who are moving from school to school potentially being, or increasing their own risk of infection because they're in multiple schools in a day or in a week? Any, any comment on that?
I think, and Deborah Fokes is going to showcase, you know, the high-level health just as a reminder, because we've talked quite a bit at the board meetings about our health and safety guidelines. But she'll hit some of those major ones in a minute here. But I think it's important that, that we, our goal is to have every single school as safe as possible. It's all about mitigating risk, right? And we are still today, that Deborah is going to mention, that we're recommending six feet of social distance and we're recommending masks for all children and all adults unless they have a medical exemption. We're putting restrictions and that is much more stringent than most of the districts that are in this county and in this region and even some of our Ohio eight brothers and sisters who are opening now, that some are going below that six feet of social distance. Right now, we're recommending to stay with that. And that's primarily to keep our faculty safe and our students and to limit the number of students who would have to quarantine if we did have a case. If you're below that six feet, you can pick up more students and more faculty who would have to quarantine if we maintain that six feet of social distance. That helps us protect that we won't have to pick up a whole group of students. It may in fact only be that one student who may need to quarantine because we've taken that extra precaution to maintain that six feet of social distance.
Thank you. Dr. Akbar?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Hall, for asking or mentioning the point about students opening and roll, enrolling. That was one of the things I was going to think, say. The one question I have is really about the next slide that you showed with the 115 school district, or well, maybe it's two slides from here, sorry. Okay. Yes, this slide. So where it, it says 115 out of one Yes, this slide. So where it, it says 115 out of 122 schools listed has no cases reported, and this is in Summit County. My question is, how many of those schools are in session out of the 115?
There are no, there, the only, and, and we can get you that data out of all of these schools because these also include our private schools and charter schools that aren't just the standard districts. But I am not familiar with any Summit County school district that has not reopened as blended as of yet. And then all the private and charters, I would say 90% of those have opened fully. There are a handful that we're aware of that are still doing remote. But, but I would venture to say we're probably at about 90% of the schools here have opened and at least blended. Many have done the five days a week with they, with trying to stay within the six feet of social distance, but they're actually generally less than that. But I can get that data to show exactly which ones of these are, are blended and which ones are fully in session. We have a spreadsheet that we track all of that for the typical districts. I'll have to work on getting all the small charters as well.
Thank you.
Great question. Anyone else before we start with the reopening plans? All right, hearing and seeing done. I think you're good to go.
So the, so the, just to tee this up and hand it off to Ms. Shipe. The reopening teams, our charge was to look at that blended model. And if the board chose to reopen, what should that blended model look like from kindergarten through 12th grade? So that's what we're presenting tonight. We're not going to talk about whether we should stay remote or whether we should go five days or whether we should go blended. That is for the board to decide. The teachers were charged with that blended model in the middle. You know, what should that look like so that we had a very clear picture and a very clear option to give to you tonight? And, and they have done an outstanding, outstanding job. I couldn't have asked for better teachers, more committed teachers. And I said earlier, all the way through since last, end of last year, through the summer and through this entire fall, they have been diligent about making these plans tight in terms of a blended option. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Shipe.
Thank you. So just to underscore what Dr. McWilliams Woods just said, these were teams that were put together. They're listed here. We had 10 teams. With the exception of the athletic team, which was appointed prior to us putting together these collaborative teams because they had to start sooner. We had many teachers, many administrators, lots of input from March on. And I do want to say, I also appreciate the number of teachers that stepped up to the plate, worked long hours over the summer. I just want to underscore also that their initial charge was to work on remote models, which they did and which you already have on the table. Tonight, we're only, I hesitate to use the word recommending, but we're proposing the blended models that these teams then put together so that you can compare and, and do what you need to do. The first team that I'd like to, I'm sorry, Ellen, did you want to pick up here?
Uh, no, I'm gonna go ahead and click, we're gonna use the actual document that was shared with families as the basis of our presentation tonight. And then, but the, at the end, we've added more detail to the document that was shared with families. So I think we thought this was the best way to show it instead of separating it out so families could know as soon as we post this on the website tomorrow, they're looking at the same document that you all shared tonight. We asked Deborah Folk to just highlight some of the areas for the health and safety provisions that kick off this document. And again, this has been out on the website. This was shared with all the families and this is what was used if they needed more information than what was actually in the survey itself. Dr. Hall, this is exactly where I mentioned earlier that if families chose blended learning, then the fifth bullet down says you may or may not have the same teacher. And then the same over here for the remote learning, that same option. But this was the start of explaining to families the two choices for the survey. But then the entire rest of the document is explaining the safety protocols that will be in place for a blended learning option. And then we go straight into the instructional models. So Mrs. Folk, will you step through and just hide the highlighted areas for the health and safety?
Good evening. It's nice to see you all. As we put together the health and safety for blended learning, please look at the highlighted areas and then there's additional information. We will maintain the six feet of social distancing. Although there have been discussions with other districts and I know that we have heard that other districts may be doing less than six feet in working with Summit County Public Health, it is in our best interest for the safety of our students and staff to continue that six feet of social distancing. We have reduced the capacity of the school buses and that was again in line with approval of Summit County. And I please want to advise you that this has been a successful plan because we're using these buses now to transport schools that we service using that plan currently to non-publics and charters. So the reduction and the safety protocols on the buses have been very, very successful. That all staff and students wear masks. We currently were very pleased tonight to receive another donation of almost 100,000 masks from Fort NGL along with the other donations that we have received from FEMA and GAR. And we are able to help support both staff and students in this regard. Although many of our staff and students do have their own masks that they are bringing on a daily basis. Clean and sanitize the building. Our standard procedures, but thankfully you have just approved the disinfection two-step process tonight during your approval of the business affairs recommendations. This is an application of not only a sanitizing, but an antimicrobial solution on top of that, that once it dries, it is truly allows us to mitigate the spread of COVID in our classrooms, in our cafeterias, in our gyms, in our office areas. And we have already begun planning that process and have started. We will continue to limit the visitation by outside visitors to our buildings. This has already been in place. And we will continually watch that and mitigate that as well. And outside use of the buildings is limited as well after school hours. We will continue to provide meals to all students. Whether they will be blended and in school or that they will have 100% remote access. I am happy to report there was a, a change in the USDA program that allows us to continue summer feeding, which is the easiest of the options through the end of the school year. This just happened yesterday. This will be available throughout the season in order to do that. And then I wanted to let you know what the bus procedures for blended learning are, and we listed those at the bottom of the document. So that we can let people know exactly what's going to happen when, if a child travels by bus. Man. Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Shipe, now we'll go through the models.
So initially, when we brought together the elementary team, which is K-5, however, it does include sixth grade in the east cluster. We had split the teams up into both primary and intermediate. After seeing that, we found that it was easier and more collaborative if we just join those two teams back together as one. They've worked on this blended model and it's what they're calling a two-two-one model, which would break the students up into two core cohorts. Monday and Wednesday, half the students would participate in onsite learning socially distanced. So the, again, the classrooms would be adjusted for that, smaller class sizes. And then on Tuesday and Thursday, the second cohort would come into onsite. They would be given onsite lessons and learning, teaching and learning. And then they would be assigned lessons and tasks to work on their remote days. So two days onsite, two days remote. Friday, we're, they were calling a remote check-in and that would be a day where teachers would be able to work with individual students, small groups, do check-ins with most of their class to see where the needs are, what resources students would need. And obviously check in with parents to see where any particular student might need some additional support. If you can scroll down there, Ellen. So a sample daily schedule for students would be coming in at 8:30 and working until 2 o'clock. The teachers today would continue to be 8 to 3:15. They would, as students would receive breakfast once they arrive at school. The AM lesson session would begin at 8:30 to 11: and working with those onsite students. Lunch and recess would remain 11 to noon. And each school will typically have a different way to approach that depending on the building that they're in. So they can adjust that. The teachers thought it was very important that the students have at least 30 minutes of break time during the day, only, not only mask break perhaps. So what the teachers would like to do is have that 30 minutes for lunch. And then an additional 30 minutes where they could develop a schedule at the building, which would be a staggered schedule, which a particular teacher could then take their students out on the playground and socially distanced from each other or have a break within the room, socially distanced with some activities just so they could turn off their brain for a moment and just socialize. It was really important and they said that possibly depending on the building, they could do a 15-minute break in the morning and a 15-minute break in the afternoon. That would be up to each individual teacher based on their students' needs. Particularly at the younger age, at the primary age. And then they, beginning at noon to 2 o'clock would be the PM session of lessons. Dismissal would be at 2 o'clock. And then the teachers would continue their workday at 3:15, getting that all-important planning time. They would be assigned a lunch at between 11 and 12, but they would be with the students. So the eight, so the 2 o'clock to 3:15 would be for teacher collaboration and planning.
Okay, then when we go on to the middle school.
Ellen, did we want to say questions at each point or wait till the end?
If there's specific questions about the elementary, I think it'd be fine to take them now. If there's any question, just in term, especially in terms of clarifying the actual model itself.
Yeah, I have a clarifying question if I may, Mr. President.
Sure.
So the, the lunch piece. So if I'm looking at that right, so the teachers, so so teachers would, they would not get a lunch break or they'd have to eat lunch with, with the students? I mean, I'm assuming, I'm assuming that they're eating lunch with the students. And, and they were making the time on, 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 at the end of the day? Is that, is that what I'm seeing there? Just, I mean, just for clarification sake?
Correct. They would be able to, they would need to eat lunch with the students. However, there are some cafeterias and maybe Deb Folk could address this. There are some cafeterias in some buildings, depending on social distancing, where some of, that's why we say that for the most part, each building can kind of customize this depending on the number of enrollment and number of staff in the building. If they're able to utilize the cafeteria and then they have the staff, you can't leave students unsupervised during lunch. Therefore, the teachers will be in their rooms with students at the lunch break for 30 minutes. That's not an uninterrupted lunch for the teachers, that they normally have that break in student supervision. At the elementary level, that's very difficult to acquire, so doing social distancing. So they have, the team did put a 30-minute lunch also for teachers at the end of the day from 2 to 2:30. And then that 2:30 to 3:15 would be teacher collaboration time. In addition to that, depending on the special schedule for art, music, gym is when normally elementary teachers receive their planning times. They would have a 45-minute planning time sometime during the day in which they could choose to eat their lunch also during that time.
Roger that. And then my, then my second and last question, I'll, I'll see the floor back to the Mr. Bravo. But, so if I'm looking at this right, and I think, I think this is important, you know, this is an important distinction slash clarification. So, and the remote model, in my read on this, is kids, what kids have, students have instruction every day. And in a blended model, they have three days less instruction. Am I, am I, am I understanding that right?
They do have three days remote. Now, you could argue that on the Friday in the elementary model, some of the students will have instruction based on need. But they are receiving more direct instruction in the remote model at this point.
Roger that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Autry, and then Ms. Mansfield.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think Derek actually alluded to my question, which was about the self-directed remote learning days. So that, just to clarify, that is actually different than what's going on right now. So what, what you're showing us, those students on the self-directed remote days, there's not an actual teacher giving a lesson. Is that accurate?
That is accurate, yes. Currently with five days remote, 100% remote, the teacher is in the classroom 100% of the time when students are being taught. A self-directed remote day is the, the students would support themselves based on the lesson they received the prior day with projects and work that they had to complete based on the lesson they just received. So that's correct, Ms. Autry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mansfield.
So I, I think I have questions on both ends here. So I heard from a few teachers who were concerned about the, the lack of breaks and I know part of the reason we're keeping one adult with every class is to limit that exposure by adults to children and children to adults. But there's been some concern expressed by a few that breaks may be hard to come by. It's already hard when you're a teacher if you have to have a restroom break or, you know, waiting to eat your lunch while you're, especially, I, I know what cafeteria times are sometimes like, especially with little ones trying to get things opened and things like that. We usually have people who are in the cafeterias that can help them with that. In this case, it's going to be the teacher while they're also trying to get their lunch in. So just a little, just wanted to express a concern about that. I'm sure there's something in the plan. I, I told them, Ms. Shipe, that there's no way that you would let us leave them without, without those, those safety things in place, those, those comfort things in place. So I, I tried to reassure on that. So if you want to address that at all, and then I have one clarification after that.
I appreciate the question. Thank you. So it is a real concern. And just by nature of scheduling, elementary buildings operate different schedules than secondary buildings. In secondary buildings, when they, the, the students are on a period-by-period schedule, there is time to naturally include those planning times and those break times in for teachers. That, this is going to be a real challenge based on our staffing for in elementary buildings. As far as break times from students, that would be during their daily planning time. And where a building could, could support that, an additional break time for. And, and, and I think that, and if Dr. McWilliams Woods wants to weigh in, I think we have a commitment that those are the details that we will work with, building to building, after the fact, to ensure that those teachers have the ability to leave their students to use the restroom when they need to. And to, and, and they also had a real concern with losing that teacher collaboration time. You know, our teachers are working, and I'm sure you all realize this, they're working much longer hours than they, they always work longer hours outside of their contractual workday willingly, that's the profession. But they are working a lot of hours. And so I think we do have to be aware of our staff's social and emotional needs and to make sure they do have that break time so that they can sustain the teaching, the great teaching that they're doing. So yes, we would address that.
Yeah, I do think it's, it's important because the model that we had proposed back, I always call it our June twenty-ninth model, is different than this model. When we were communicating back on June twenty-ninth, we were proposing that our K-two come back four or five days a week. And the way we were doing that was by prioritizing staff in the elementary building to cover classes to reduce class size. So we were going to be pulling tutors and our arts, fine arts teachers and, and using them to help support the staffing needs to reduce class sizes in K-two in kind of a unique staffing model. We're not proposing that here. So I think it's really, really important for everyone to hear what Ms. Shipe said is that we still, with this model that we're proposing tonight, this is a blended model where teachers will have their, there will be regular specials in this model, so they will have their planning time usually, just the way they normally do, because we'll be able to have the schedules for the arts basically the same as a typical day, because we're not pulling them to do the K-two anymore. Where things change a bit is for lunch, depending on the size of the building and that cafeteria size and how many kids you need to get through lunches, we can use cafeterias and that's part of the health guidelines that we just went through. But it's in this document for year review that you received before this meeting. We can use cafeterias with the appropriate social distancing. But depending on the size of the building, depending on how many students you have to get through different cycles of that lunchroom, we may need to use classrooms as well. And that's where the team said, well, let's have teachers then, because you can't have students eat by themselves with just older kids supervising. That's not permitted in our child nutrition federal guidelines. So yes, some teachers may need to, in some buildings, may need to eat with their students. But that's why we've made some accommodations to have students leave earlier to accommodate for that. So it's not the model that you saw last spring or last summer where we were really not giving teachers much break at all because we were pulling all staff so they couldn't have their planning time during the day. But this one, they, they should be able to get their planning time in.
The only challenge would be because elementary teachers have four days of planning. So on that fifth day would be another challenge for each individual building to work in a break time for teachers. They don't have a special scheduled for that day.
Okay. And that was one of the issues that came up. And, and I tried to reassure that this is the big picture plan and then we would work on it at the building level. And again, reassuring that there is no way that you would, that either of you would sign off on a plan that didn't take good, good care of the teacher. So that was the, that was that. The, the other question is, I want to kind of redirect back to something that Dr. Hall asked about instruction time, and I, I guess Diana's kind of was that direction too. Dr. McWilliams Woods, we talked a little this week about how even though the actual time with a teacher in front of them might be less, how there was a belief from the teachers and the committees that with the reduced class size, so especially if it ends up with that sixty-forty split, right? So you've got sixty percent of the kids coming back and then that sixty percent is cut in half for each cohort. You've got a really small class size and how the staff believed that that would make a big difference in, in material delivery, right? If you have a class of twenty-four delivering that material versus a class of eight to ten or less delivering material.
Yeah, the balance that, that we're navigating here is in the remote, yes, you get five days of instruction, direct instruction from your teachers. For the students who are able to connect in, who don't have disruptions at home, who don't have technology glitches coming in and out, whose family is there to support them to make sure they're staying intact and it's not a fifth grader trying to supervise a first grader being online. You know, all those conditions that, yes, we have five days of instruction. And in some of our classes, our teachers are reporting that great percentages of students showing up every day and being engaged that entire time. And then in other classes, teachers are saying that's a struggle. And so, so when you balance this model, yes, there is less direct instruction time. But you're banking on, just as you were saying, Mrs. Mansfield, that two days of face-to-face instruction without the distractions from home, without the technology glitches coming in and out because of bandwidth issues, without, you know, fifth graders trying to supervise first graders to keep them engaged in a lesson. You take all that away, when you get them in front of you and you have two days of class sizes of twelve or less, so you're automatically getting a small group instruction that those two days with then some remote lessons that are assigned by the teacher to support that, where yes, students have to do it on their own, similar to some of our students are doing their learning on their own right now without a lot of family support because the families are working, that those two days of small group instruction, twelve or less, is where the sweet spot that you can get a tremendous amount of instruction done. And that balances the loss of five days of direct instruction. So that's the, that's the balance. It is, it's gut-wrenching because for the students who are engaged remotely, they're getting that five days of direct instruction. But there's a lot of conditions on what I just said about for the students who are fully engaged in their learning remotely to take advantage of that five days of instruction.
And I will say that I would be remiss not to repeat what I'd said earlier, that even among our teachers, as with our families and administrators, we have people all over the map. You know, there's no one perfect model and, and there's going to be challenges to anything. But I believe everybody approached this with the best interest of the kids, but also keeping in mind the health and safety of our staff. So I, I believe when you say staff noted or that, I would say in any, every instance, some staff believe one thing, some staff believe another. So that's why I'm interested and I'm sure you will be too at the results of our AEA survey. We might get a clearer picture.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Ms. McKittrick and then Dr. Hall.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone, and thank you to the teams for all their hard work in putting this document together. I have a question about the days when the kids will be at home, especially for our youngest students, maybe up through sixth grade or fifth grade, I suppose. The, the self-directed remote days. I'm wondering, I'm looking at the schedule and I'm seeing two-hour chunks of time for them. And I'm wondering developmentally for, especially our youngest kids, if that's a developmentally appropriate expectation that a child in kindergarten, first, second, third grade can sit and, I don't know, I guess maybe the, the word self-directed is what I'm struggling with because I don't know so many kids who are that young who would be self-directed for two hours at a time. So if you could walk me through that maybe a little bit, thank you.
So the schedule in front of you right now, the two-hour chunks of time would be for the site-based learning. Those would be, that would be the schedule that the teachers and students would follow onsite on the two days when it's site-based instruction. The self-directed remote time would be at the student's pace. They would just have an assignment or a remote lesson that they had to complete, but they would do that at their pace.
Yeah, the teachers would be posting, you know, we'll, we will have this general framework that in the morning, if a teacher has for their morning block, typically on their site-based days and on their check-in day, that, that this is when reading is, for example. The families and the students on those self-directed days, the recommendation will be that they continue doing their reading lessons in the morning and then they do their math in the afternoon, if that's the typical schedule. How they actually break that time up will be up to the family in terms of the pacing and to, for the student, given what assignments are assigned. It may not be anything computerized. It may be a project that the teachers talked about during the site-based time and they're asking them to do the project, which might be more of a hands-on type project that they're doing that next day. It's not all necessarily computer-based because now that you will be site-based with them. So there can be different types of assignments assigned for that self-directed day. That's why it says self-directed remote instruction, but it can be self-directed in terms of the assignment, whatever the assignment is given.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hall.
Yeah, thanks. So first, I, I just want to recognize and acknowledge that, that tonight, the purpose of tonight is not to debate the merit of these plans. I think it's to ask clarifying questions that will help us make a decision down the road. So, so again, again, just want to make sure I'm, I'm following that sort of same rubric myself and, and sort of thinking about what I'm going to ask and not ask. You know, so, but at that point, you know, I want to go back to Ms. Mansfield's point for a minute, right? And Dr. Millers, you weighed in on this as well. I think the challenge here is that there's not any real consensus that we know of yet, right? I mean, so a lot of the ifs that you mentioned, the assumptions that you mentioned on remote learning days, I imagine that cuts both ways. I imagine those same ifs and assumptions also apply on self-directed remote days as well, right? I mean, so it gets challenging, you know, on a, on a remote day, think about the challenge you have on a day where there is no structure that's even attempted to be introduced at all. Right? I mean, and so, you know, I, you know, like Ms. Mansfield, I've talked to a lot of teachers this week as well. And this is why I'm saying there's no real consensus and this is why the survey results, I'm really looking forward to seeing because, you know, you know, the twenty-five or so teachers I talked to this week, all but one, you know, you know, had a lot of concerns, you know, with the blended model because they were feeling that they were already a little bit behind in doing remote. And that they believe that there was no way that they were going to be able to get five days, five days of instruction crammed into two days regardless of, of, of the class size. Now granted, that's not me saying that. That's me sharing feedback that I've heard from teachers with this particular group. I'm not saying, I'm not here to say who's right or wrong or to assign value judgments either way. I'm just sharing feedback that I've gotten. So that's where, you know, as I'm, in my mind, as I'm balancing the merits of the remote model and balancing the merits of a blended model, you know, you know, where I'm currently at is regardless of what this board decides to do in a week or two, you know, there are going to be a lot of folks who are unhappy with what we do. And so, so I, I, this is just, I mean, you know, this decision just is, as you put it earlier, this, this is truly gut-wrenching. So, so anyway, so that was sort of
Yeah, I think
comment.
Just, just to add in there, I think this is that one time in everyone's career, and Ms. Shipe and I have talked about this frequently, that this is that one time where no matter what you pick, it is not going to be the right decision for a group of faculty and a group of students and a group of family members. So I think our charge collectively is to look at all of the risk factors, not just the pandemic risk factors, but also the academic risk factors, the social, emotional, mental health risk factors. Look at all of them and do our best in terms of giving choices, giving options and moving forward with confidence. And knowing that unfortunately, there is going to be families and faculty and staff who that decision is not going to be the best decision. But we have to look at all of those collective, those collective factors and obviously all of the data that we just talked about with the, the risk factors for the health and safety, we need to look at that collectively. If we have students stay at home completely and stay with the remote, we're doing a fabulous job with the remote learning, better than any district, I think I would point to. We're doing fabulous. There are students who are not. And we're seeing the early returns from our interim progress reports that I've been talking to our principals, gathering that data that I'll be able to share with you for our secondary students. And we're seeing significant increases in the number of students who are failing and who are not at the same level that they were last fall. So we know that there are, there are great remote education happening better than I could have ever envisioned and that's a testament to our faculty who are just ridiculously dedicated to our students and families. But there are some students who are not able to keep up and engage and for whatever reason. And I hear testimony from teachers who tell me that students who are completely disengaged in a brick and mortar are flourishing right now. And then I'm hearing student from a teacher saying that students who were flourishing in a brick and mortar are struggling. And that could even be our highest performing kids. So as you know, it can go both ways. I think whatever we choose, if we decide to stay a hundred percent remote, we have to figure a plan to not just let the students who are not making it and who are not connecting and who are struggling, we have to figure some way to engage them, offer some intervention services, offer a way to make that happen. And I think that's the balance. We have this plan for blended, this plan for blended, you know, if that's what you choose, we're going to go full-blown and make this a great success as a collective team. If we decide to stay a hundred percent remote, I think we've got to look at needs to shore. Maybe it's a hundred percent remote plus with some features to help support the students who are not being successful right now instead of just continuing with exactly what we're doing. And we can obviously talk more about that.
And Dr. McWilliams Woods and I spoke as recent as today at length about perhaps the next charge for our committees would be to come up with some type of intervention model that, that will address those needs or several models so that, so that our families would have a number of options. So it's, thank, thank you, thank you to the teachers and administrators who are on those committees because we just upped them again for another.
Yeah, right. They thought their work was done, but we're never letting them go away.
All right. I think we, we have our questions for now. Let's move on maybe to the secondary and then we'll open it back up.
I think the, the middle school, this should be pretty easy because it's very similar. It's also a two-two-one model that we just talked about with elementary. So it's two site-based days, two self-directed remote days and one remote check-in day, exactly like we talked about with elementary. It's two cohorts. It'll be Monday, Wednesdays. We didn't mention with elementary that the way we'll do the assignments for the two cohorts will be by last name and then it's called family census that we have in our system where even if your fam, if your children have different last names, they'll be picked up as one unit so that we'll line up K through eight, the days that students are coming in for site-based, we'll be able to line up the family so that your students are coming in all on the same day. And so we'll make sure of that. So the middle school's very similar. The sample schedule is the same for the middle school. The students would actually see every single teacher in their typical schedule, typical brick and mortar kind of schedule on the two days that they come in. And then the same way as elementary, on the day, the site-based day, the teachers would give assignments for the self-directed remote days. And they would give assignments either a project-based while the students are there for site-based. But we would continue to use Google Classroom and have all the assignments there so that, that we continue that. And that's just in case there's a student who needs to be off for whatever reason. If they're sick at home, that we're so now into all of this digital kind of classroom and turning in assignments digitally, that we can have a seamless system now that if a student does need to be out or a group of students need to be out, they can still get their assignments all through Google Classroom and turn their assignments in that way, too. That's also another way that we're trying to reduce exchanging of papers, too, that we can keep the assignments turned in as much digitally as possible. So the, the schedules look similar. The self-directed schedule, we just basically in the same way as Mrs. McKittrick asked for elementary, we're saying that students should basically follow the same flow of the day, although this is self-directed. The, they can use their own kind of schedule to navigate through on the self-directed days. But we decided just to post, the team decided to post similar flow for the students to know how much time they should be spending on the different assignments provided throughout the day. But there's flexibility for families on how to do those self-directed days. And then high school, I'll go ahead and do this and then see if there's any questions for secondary. High school is different. It's not quite the same as the June 29th model. The high school team really worked diligently on how best to handle these credit-bearing classes that they have. You know, the high school world in terms of courses, they're, these are all high-stakes courses that they're taking now. These are all credit-bearing, for the most part, every single is credit-bearing or graduation requirements for many of the electives as well. So having shifts in schedules and having shifts in courses mid-semester was an issue that the high school team was absolutely adamant that shouldn't happen in the middle of a high school course. So their recommendation is, and it's almost like I was saying, this is a great model of how you can have, stay remote, but provide time for some intervention, as I was just speaking to Dr. Hall about, that this schedule maintains the remote during the large part of morning and even into that early afternoon. So the remote schedule would, there's a little bit less time in each course, but the teachers would still be meeting with the students every day remotely. And that's this 8:30 to 1 facilitated remote time. So that's just exactly like what they're doing now. And then in the afternoons, students would be scheduled in cohorts so it wouldn't be every kid having an opportunity to come on a, on an afternoon. The, the academy teams would work collectively. So that's all the content teachers in an academy team. And by cohort, they would decide which students needed to come in. And that could be based on, and it, it's not all the kids would come in in the afternoon. This is where kids could come for, because they're struggling in a course and needing some intervention time, they could come in for their career tech labs. If you think of all of our career tech that we just celebrated this morning with our HIT program, all those healthcare fields to get the industry credentials that they need in those healthcare fields, which goes towards graduation, you have to have lab time. You can't get a welding industry certificate without spending time welding. You can't get a cosmetology license and industry credential without spending hours cutting here. And all of that could happen during this afternoon time. And also, you know, on all the way through Friday afternoons, we could kind of block that time during that, that afternoon block. So we're calling that site-based support, but it would only be students who are assigned by their academy team. When you look at a sample schedule, then you've got the primary instruction. We're still in block days for our high schools. So on A day, there would be four blocks that go through the morning. On B day, four blocks that's similar to what they're happening right now. And then in the afternoon, this gives you a little bit more detail about that self-directed remote and site-based support instruction. So some students would be called in for that afternoon time. And again, they would be in cohorts, same way in two different groups. So we're not asking mixed groups of kids to come in for that afternoon. But the academy teams would work out who comes in during that afternoon block. And then the, the only other team that we're reporting out tonight, and then we'll take any questions, is the students with severe disabilities. There, that team is recommending having students come in each day, but knowing that based on, there's a commitment that we would have reduced class sizes. The way that our numbers are looking right now with 40% staying remote and 60% choosing blended, this would naturally get these classes down from eight typically to four, probably five at the, the highest number. And we would also look at making sure that there were two educational assistants in the classroom. The MD teachers and Ms. Scheibert can weigh in on this group because they, they're passionate about keeping their classes intact and not having the remote kids go and be educated by other teachers that haven't had the students. They are so dedicated to their class and to the relationships that they form with their students and the families, that they want to keep that class intact. And so this team will really look at that schedule during the day because they would like to keep the remote students and the site-based students and build the schedule during the day to enable them to see the students for some site-based instruction, but then also see the remote students, the 100% remote students at the same time in the afternoon or with their educational assistants. While the educational assistants are with the remote students, they're working with their site-based students. There will be, need to be a lot of time for that team to keep working, to figure out what that schedule looks like and what's the best flow. But I have a lot of confidence that they'll be able to pull that off. Yeah. Did you want to add anything for that group?
That, yes, I appreciate that. The, not only are the, the teachers passionate about it, but our families certainly. It's so critically important. I mean, I, even I'm speaking as an intervention specialist. Those highest needs students really need to have the, their, their same teacher. They, they don't do the transitions very well. And if, if we can make, but, but there's also many challenges as far as social distancing, having enough adults available on a consistent basis that we can rely on, that will be there to meet the, both the physical and social emotional needs and academic needs of these students. So we're not quite there yet, but the team is, is, is very represented. Not only the teachers, but our, our supporting services, our, their related service providers are on that team. And I believe if they can continue working on that, that they should be able to come up with something.
And I just wanted to quickly mention, because I know a couple of board members had teed this up for me to talk about tonight, that the, the interim program that we have in place where the after-school program for our students with severe disabilities, I wanted to just give you an update on where we were with that, which is the bridge to whatever we decide for that second nine weeks. The deadline for parents to respond is today, although we're, you know, continuing to reach out to families who didn't respond to the survey. So far, we have 73 parents who've responded for the, the eligible families of students with severe disabilities. 12 have declined so far, 61 have signed up. So that's about 83% of the families who've reached out. There are a number of families who haven't responded to the survey yet. So we're calling and following up to see if their non-response was because they're not interested or whether they just missed the communication that went home regarding this opportunity. So we'll be following up. We did get, and we've posted the position and we have a number of staff, we had 28 intervention specialists apply to work the after-school program. So we'll be able to, to match that up shortly and it'll start in a couple of weeks. So that is, the only thing that is missing from this plan right now is our early learning program, our preschool. Ms. Scheibert and I just put together a team. We thought the elementary model would suffice for preschool, but we have decided to have a separate team come together with preschool teachers. And so they'll be working this week to look at the elementary model and see if they want to adopt that or something separate. So the next time we'll be able to see you at the next meeting, we'll be sure to include the preschool team as well. And that is all we have. So we'll open it up to any additional questions.
Thank you. Dr. Akbar and then Dr. Hall.
Okay, so I'm going to ask my questions first, then I have a comment. Before I do that, I do want to say I appreciate you mentioning, Ms. Scheibert, about teachers working more during COVID. One of the sad realities that I've heard is people have made comments that teachers aren't working. And I've actually been appalled by, by those comments because teachers are working more. And, you know, as a person who taught for a year, and one of the reasons why I decided to stop teaching was because it was the workload, which is so much. So I will never think that teachers don't work a lot. So I have firsthand experience with that. But with that being said, I wanted to say something else after that, but I want to get to my questions. I won't ask all of them for the sake of time and to let some of the other board members ask. But I, you, you kind of teed me up really well, Dr. McWilliams Woods, because one of my concerns, actually Ms. Scheibert as well, is those students in what I'm calling the, the most challenging group of students. So I'm really concerned about the students who are in special ed. I'm really concerned about those students who are also in need of, you know, a career technical education in the classroom lab-type experiences, as we talked about earlier today. I'm also concerned about those students who aren't connecting in and what the challenges that may bring to them. So with all that being said, well, I forgot another group that I'm really concerned about, which is K through three. And I'm really still on the third grade portion of that. So just want to put that out there. I'm really concerned about those groups mostly because we know that they're the, the ones who are probably falling the most behind. And so I'm wondering, when you think about that, what plans do you have to? How do I say this? What plans do you have? Wait, if we go fully blended, right? And then something happens, are we going to be closing school by school? Are we looking at the entire district? And then if we do have to go school by school, how are we attending to those needs? Considering if we go with this plan is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I think that's actually an important question because we, Ms. Scheibert and I, from day one, even back at our June 29th model, we wanted to make sure we were building this in a way that it was seamless so that if we did have students who needed to be remote or if we, if the whole district or the governor shut down schools again, could we do this in a way that it would just be easy for us? That we wouldn't have to take, you know, two weeks to freak out and say, oh my gosh, now we have to go remote and how do we switch things? Fortunately, we have that infrastructure and the technology and the amazing professional development that our teacher trainers did at the beginning of the year, that we can make that seamless, that if we do have students who get quarantined in a small group individually, they can continue to learn at home or if we had to do an entire school. I'd like to have Mrs. Folk, Folk explain what happens when you do the contact tracing because it is very precise. It's not this large sweep that the whole school has to go. And she has experience and is living with the folks from some kind of public health. So she can explain what happens step by step when a student gets identified or a faculty member gets identified.
Good evening again. So let's go with a student first. When we're notified that a student has tested positive, we ask exactly what information we found with how did they get to be positive and who is their contacts? If they are truly sitting in a classroom because it is blended learning, we have worked very closely with our teacher union to explain that every teacher will need to have a specific seating chart, just like we do on the buses, to locate a student in the classroom. So as an example, if I was attending Ms. Scheibert's class, she's going to have a seating chart where I sit. And every day that I'm in the class, I'm at that desk and that desk only. The desks are socially distanced. I would be wearing my mask. And therefore, if I tested positive, then I could located as to who I was around in, within the class on every day that I'm in attendance. So those charts are extremely important to keep and keep up to date. The same thing will happen just as we do on a bus now. We've had to pull this only once for a charter school that we actually thought we had an issue with, and it was very successful. Once a student is then told to be positive because of the new governor's requirement, I then go out to the Summit County website and I report that that student is positive. School district, I then also list the school in which the student is located. One of the things that we are asked are, is the student part of any kind of extracurricular activities? And if they are, we are required to list them. We also are required at this point to say, is the student attending school remotely? Or, you know, five days a week? It depends on those answers as to what we need to do next. A contact is considered less than six feet for more than 15 minutes. So therefore, those are the kinds of criteria that we will follow for students. The same issue happens when a staff member reports themselves as a positive to either myself or HR. And Mr. Wamas and I work very closely with this. Mr. Wamas then contacts the individual person to see exactly, when did they start to realize that they were having symptoms? You go back 48 hours to start seeing when the disease process started. We then report that also to Summit County Health. And we do that same kind of tracing back. So as an example, right now, if you had a staff member that is working remotely from home, they may not have any direct context that we have to report. And with putting that information for students or staff onto the Summit County website, I then go out to our website. If you go to our main website, click on districts and then go to the bottom right-hand corner, you will see the current APS COVID dashboard that is required for us to notify community. you will see the current APS COVID dashboard that is required for us to notify community. And we update those are necessary. You'll see a listing of active students and reported cases and the same for staff. Now, what's unique is the actual case counts stay the same and get adjusted if we would get more. What changes is after the quarantining is over and the student or released from being in quarantine or in isolation, then that number goes down because they're no longer an active case. So that is then updated and by reporting it to Summit County, that is then sent on to the state so that they get that data as well. Did I answer your questions, Dr. Akbar?
I think you did.
Yeah. I think the most, the most important two numbers are anyone within six feet of the student for fifteen minutes or more. That's who needs to be quarantined and then, so it's not the whole school has to shut down. It's not the whole class that has to shut down. It's anybody who's positive, anyone who is within six feet for fifteen minutes or more, that's who has to to uh potentially quarantine. The Summit County Public Health is who makes that final determination. But that's why the more we can keep six feet of social distance, at least right now, that helps us in terms of the number of students who would have to be sent home if a student or a staff member tests positive. And then we can continue their remote education while they're home until they get back.
So then that that's the perfect model, right? So then the decision on you is that, and what teachers are concerned with, obviously, is what if a student's asymptomatic? What if a staff member's asymptomatic? How do I know if it's a uh an exposure to COVID or if that student has a cold or the flu? Um, so it's challenging. Again, it's it's not going to be a a perfect scenario. On paper, it looks great.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, I exactly, I know, you know, I have allergies, so my nose or eyes can be running any day.
I do, and every time I cough in a store, people are looking at me.
Like he got the plague or something, yeah. So that's definitely a reality that we live in, unfortunately. Uh, so I'm gonna ask one more question and then I'll make a point. And then if we have time at the end, I'll ask my last question. So um, the other concern that I have is around uh student and staff behavior. Uh, one of the or actually two of the conversations I had this last week and weekend was around um, and I think we might even gotten an email about this too, was around just uh seeing uh some staff members getting comfortable and and not using their mask um and and being physically distancing. And this isn't to denigrate any one person or anything, but um, the concerns that I was receiving was more so around students, but then that other staff thing as well. So just thinking about the culture that we need to create in the school and throughout the district around the proper habits in which we need to engage, because it's a totally different way to engage in a school than they than anyone's ever experienced in our district. So is there plans, I'm sure there are, what plans are in place to uh monitor uh or encourage those behaviors and habits? And then also, um, I think Dr. Hall mentioned this uh months ago. One of my other concerns that's kind of related to that is individuals who may have some type of symptoms. You know, are there procedures in place for them to um for that to be caught early on?
Can I help address, and I'm going to go to the second one first, Dr. Akbar? The health clinics at all schools have been updated over this past summer. So our nursing staff, who we get from Akron Children's Hospital, have been trained to look for exactly COVID symptoms. We have isolation units that if a student or a staff member would report to the clinic showing symptoms, they come into a different door, they're evaluated. If it is truly not a COVID issue, the student or staff will be returned or to work or told to go home. But if it's COVID, we isolate them in the isolation location. They will put a mask on a student. The parent is immediately called or the guardian and they must remove the student within sixty minutes of notification. For thirty, sixty is realistic by the time we call and a parent or guardian can travel to pick up a student. Staff members would be told to report directly to the principal that they need to leave and they would leave as soon as possible. And then the principal becomes the manager of the building to help make sure the class is covered while we get substitutes in. The second issue is we have been addressing the required masks. All buildings are signed outside that upon entry, you must have your mask. Anybody who doesn't follow the procedures are reminded of those procedures by staff members and anybody who observes it can make a anonymous call to Summit County Health. And if they report that they have observed, you know, adults in a location not following the masking requirements or students, we have to deal with it. So as an example, I will contact a school principal and say, this is a report. We need to do this immediately. If it is a support member, staff member, I have gotten him the supervisors as well, and we go over the procedures and put them back into place. And we have only at this point, I am very happy to report on only one actual sighting from Summit County Health and it was corrected immediately and it has not occurred again. So that's been a successful plan as we train everybody.
And Dr. Akbar, I think um we we had the, one of our teams, our reopening teams has been working on what those protocols would be to, and they had this in place in June um for the blended model on how do we teach all of those routines for students in the classroom and the routines for faculty? Now, we've had a better chance with faculty because we do have quite a few teachers that are coming in right now and teaching from their classrooms because we provided that as an option. Um, so at least a good number of our teachers are into that routine now, as Mrs. Folk was saying. But the students, we know we're going to have to go through some some very um deliberate rituals and routines on teaching all of those, even just the increased hand washing and um how to do that appropriately and not just assume that all kids can adequately wash their hands, even now that we've been in this pandemic for a while. So all of those routines we would have to reinforce. And we know that that they're not going to be perfect. Um, Mrs. uh or Ms. Shipe and I have met separately with our behavior support team, our shared leadership team that we have about how do we address that? If we end up with issues with masks and um any kind of refusal to do things, how are we going to address that? And we've worked through some of that and will continue to do that as well.
Yeah, oh, thank you very much. Um, to that, to that point, I think that it might be beneficial for us to come up with some type of, I don't want to say song or some type of communication marketing campaign that will get people in the habit of what those things they should be doing regularly, that's different. Um, I think that'll be important. Uh, another, another thing on this same topic that I'm uh want to bring up is with the increased need for hand washing, that also requires um, you know, hot water. Um, and one of the things that I've noticed uh in many of our schools is it takes forever for the water to turn hot um when you're in the restroom trying to wash your hands. And so that is a concern of mine. I know it might sound trivial, but um that is something to consider as, you know, not everyone's going to wait forever for the water to um warm up. So that's just.
Actually, Dr. Akbar, it is not always the temperature of the water. It is the fact that the soap becomes active when you actively put it so on your hands and you actively truly do aggr-, you know, aggravate it and make a lather. And a lather can be made with anywhere from tepid water on up. So I do take your point seriously, but it's the fact that you've actively done the twenty-second washing and most soaps now will work in tepid water. Because the other part of this is, is the requirement of water temperature not to burn. Uh, somebody, you make it too hot and you end up with a first-degree burn. So we have our water set at the temperature that is regulated according to the regulations for proper temperature in a bathroom.
Okay, thank you very much. And just the one comment I'll make, uh, because I did address some concerns that I um had. Um, I also know that that the options that you laid out are, you know, based off what the 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 committee has uh put out there, and I definitely appreciate all the hard work um that that they've put into it. One of the things that I think might be beneficial for our district because of how large it is is that we um also consider a phased-to-blended model um where um we're not using uh teacher, staff and schools as guinea pigs, as I I know some people might uh believe that to be the case. If we select certain groups uh to go back first. But I think what it really does is allows allow us in a more controlled environment to uh test out some of these uh processes and procedures that we need to put in place um with a smaller cohort and then move into expanding it across the district as you've kind of put in place with this plan. It allows that smaller group to get acclimated, not only just the students, but also the teachers. And I would, um, you know, one of the things that I would put out there is that might be a good approach uh to consider um with some of my concerns, I think, especially also with the concerns of um the self-directed remote um is somewhat concerning to me. So I just wanted to put that out there as another option to consider.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Dr. Hall and then Ms. McKittrick.
Yeah, I'm gonna pick up where Dr. Akbar left off, I think directly. Um, that was a similar question I had, you know, is um, and it's something I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around is sort of philosophically here. Um, you know, I don't, I, you know, uh, I don't know that, I don't know why we have to do all this all at once. Right, I mean, we can start with, I mean, you know, to draw an analogy in healthcare, you risk stratify your patient population. You you look at who has the highest risk profile, you know, other disease states, for example, right, comorbid conditions. And you design your interventions and services, you know, so that way they're perfectly allocated to those that have, you know, the highest risk, right? Sort of highest risk burden, right? Um, to me, it's a similar, you know, sort of philosophical approach to education, you know, especially during a pandemic, right? Is who who are my riskiest, you know, students? Well, it's going to be my special ed students and generally speaking, right? My special ed students and my and 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 my young students, my K-one and two folks, right? I mean, so to me, I I don't know why we can't, you know, I I I guess I guess this is my ask, you know, is that as we sort of spin this forward, um, I I would love it, I would love it if we could talk about options that include just two, a cohort or two going back, you know? Um, you know, whether it's special ed or special ed and or K-one and two, and we can talk with the details as to how that gets done. Uh, because I think that, you know, I think I think we're all trying to adopt a getting to yes sort of mentality here with this, you know, but but doing it in a way that's responsible. And I just have a hard time, you know, with a turnkey approach where everybody goes back all at one time. Twenty thousand kids go back, you know, um, you know, it's, you know, you know, in a blended model. Um, you know, and so, so again, I I don't want to debate the merits of his model, but I guess I'm just asking, like, I I feel like this is an either-or proposition. Uh, and I I guess I'm struggling, I don't think it needs to be, you know, um, you know. So again, I just would love to it for us to also, and we discussed it at the last board meeting too, we brought this up, you know, several of us stood around looking at a phased-in approach, you know, starting with a cohort or two at a time, you know, that way, that way, something does go awry. You know, you're bringing, you know, several thousand students back to remote online as opposed to twenty thousand students back to remote online, which just would wreak even more havoc. Um, and and I think in the long run, be more destructive, in fact. Um, you know, so that's, so that's, that's what I'm going to just put out there and sort of advocate that we, a pathway that we kind of start examining as well. Um, and then, um,
Could I, I I didn't mean to interrupt, but could I just make two comments on that?
Sure, please, please.
So, um, I I guess the first thing would be that while you can put, where you can put those conditions, you can look at the students and say, who are most at-risk students? When you're looking at our staff, we have the same dynamics across the district. So you're going to have at-risk in any grade level or category and those that are lower risk. Um, so you would be bringing back staff. If you're bringing back staff based on the risk of the students, it it would not, I, you need to recognize that would not apply to staff. Um, and then secondly, I understand what you're saying, but you're not really bringing twenty-one thousand students back to a building or in a certain level. Um, you know, e- every building is different and they're their own little bubble. And uh w- we did present, I believe, um, for instance, the at-risk MD models uh classrooms, where that committee came up with um a model that did want to get back into the classroom. Um, I don't know what our preschool group will come up with. Uh, we have and and Dr. McWilliams Wood can talk about our our high school model. So I don't know that we're bringing necessarily in these blended models every student back all at one time, even with the models we presented tonight.
Yeah, I think that's fair. Um, you know, to your point, there there'll be, there'll be families who choose to, that may choose to go a hundred percent remote. So so to your point, that's what would make it twenty thousand, so 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 thanks for that correction. Um, you know, I do think though that as we sort of, as we sort of spin this forward, um, you know, I I I again, I would love to see um an option or options that are out there that where where we do look at other cohorts. And I I get to there, and again, and again, this may be a moot point, right? Because we still haven't surveyed our teachers, right? So we we don't know what they're going to say. So this could all be a moot point, which is, you know, hindsight's always twenty-twenty, but that's why, you know, I, you know, I've always preferred to get the input from the our staff first before we start developing models. Um, we don't know we're going to be even more sad.
Right. The teachers are also curious about is what, you know, if we go back at what triggers going back to remote if we would need to? I mean, you have to set some criteria for making those decisions one way or the other. Um, and I don't.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that. I'm glad you mentioned, that's actually where I was going next, right? Is is so to to me, we're looking at, I mean, regardless of what we decide to do, there has to be criteria, a dashboard, if you will. Uh, Summit County Public Health has has one that I was, you know, that that I know several have looked at already. Um, but I think that we need to adapt something like that. That way, people in the community have some transparency and to sort of what level, what are we looking at from a science standpoint that's going to influence our decision? Now, having said that, you know, that there'll be plenty of folks in the community that aren't happy with whatever we come up with. I totally get that. But I think for 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 our own set, for our own selves, our own sense of um sort of integrity, if you will, um, I think, I think this group has to come up with that. And I think we have to come up with it very, before we, before we actually vote on something, right? I think, I think we have to have that, that has to happen in parallel, can't happen consecutively, in my, in this board member's opinion. Um, you know, so, um, so, yeah. And then so I guess, so then where I was going is what a couple, a couple of quick questions, you know, um, and thinking about, and to Dr. Akbar's very point, I don't think anything is trivial here. I think everything we're talking about here is 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 of substance. Um, you know, I was, had a question about climate in this as well, right? I mean, so we're talking about, you know, teaching the kids those routines in school. That also, in in a blended model, kids are in are in class, they're having to learn those routines. That's also going to take away from classroom instruction time, you know? So, um, and also too, you know, there's the, so let me ask my question for climate is first, you know, are, do we have, you know, are we contemplating? Um, and and I don't need an answer tonight, I just need to know that this is something that we're that we're working on is, you know, sort of, uh, you know, tracking what's getting cleaned in the building when? Are we going to have the water fountains turned on, you know? Uh, and if so, how how often are those being cleaned, right? Um, you know, the bathrooms, how often are we cleaning the bathrooms? Are bathrooms being cleaned after every time a classroom or students go through there? And so so those are things that, you know, one might see as being trivial, but are. are integral to, you know, addressing and preventing, you know, spread. Should somebody be asymptomatic and not know they have it and be in the school, right? So that's where I'm saying, like, you know, we have to have some sort of mechanism for, 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 for tracking and being able to, you know, um, understand who's doing what, when, where, and why, how, from a cleaning standpoint. Um, the other thing I had, um, a question slash coming around was the quality of life in a blended model. You know, um, you know, so if I'm going to school in person, am I gonna be in a six-foot box all day? You know, so I have my mask on, so we keep talking about the mental health aspects where kids wouldn't be able to come socialize and see their classmates. Well, are they really gonna be able to, are they really seeing their classmates? Are they really talking to their classmates if they're sitting in a mask all day in, in a six-foot, you know, six, six-foot, you know, box, you know, where they, they can't touch their classmates? They can't take their mask off to talk to their classmates, you know? I mean, they, you know, they're, they're, they're being marched to the bathroom and marched right back and marched to the cafeteria, marched right, right back and sit at your desk. I mean, like, so I, I just wanna put out there that, like, I'm the quality of life in, 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 in a blended model, going to school, we keep, I mean, we're assuming that, that going back to school is gonna cure all this. But I'm just simply saying that I've got parents asking me like, well, I don't, I don't, I don't like kids going back to school. That's what it's gonna be, cuz that's like being in prison. Now, is it really? No. I mean, there's some hyperbole there, right? But, 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 but I hit your point, so. Somebody just kind of paused there and just, I, I really like to get some thoughts on or uh, some feedback around the quality of life, you know? I don't know, I don't know if this is a Ms. Folk question or a Dr. Williams Woods question around my life, and then also the climate thing.
I think in terms of the quality of life, you know, we have to remember that what we are proposing, regardless of whether you decide uh blended learning, if we phase in certain cohorts, um, based on the discussion we've had tonight. We're, we're giving families a choice regardless, right? So families can choose the, whether they want to, for their particular student. And we've heard from a number of families who are gonna say, my fourth grader is coming back to school and my eighth grader is gonna stay remote. And that, and then it could be the next family could be the total opposite. And we see that in the survey results, that it's not necessarily a family by family decision. They're making decisions based on the unique characteristics of each student. Um, so, so we're not deciding whether that's a good quality of life for the family. The family is deciding for each individual student whether they want their student to come into school with masks and six feet of social distance or whether they keep their students at home. I think that's important for all of us to remember that. Um, the second thing.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I mean, I think that's true, but I think that, that, that we ought to explain, make sure that parents understand that what, what it means to be in school, you know, in a blended model, what does that mean? I take your point, and you're, I, I agree with you, you know, that, that it's there, if we go that route, they're deciding for their child. But they, but they have to know some more details about what is they're actually deciding for their child, what they're, what the child is gonna be experiencing while they're at the school. That's, that's, that's.
Absolutely.
You know.
Absolutely. And, and it is with masks and it is with six feet of social distance. I'm hoping that our families are doing that every single day. If you think about it, that when they go to the grocery store, when they go out to see uh people in the neighborhood. I'm hoping that everywhere they're going, because that is what they should be doing, is having a mask on and keeping six feet of social distance. So school shouldn't feel that different, although there will be more students probably together doing that. But the notion of keeping six feet of social distance and keeping a mask on while you're around other people shouldn't be foreign now to our families. But it is, but it is, it's a different feel of the classroom, certainly. Because you're not sharing all sorts of crafts, you're not grabbing the scissors and cutting together all the paper. It is, there's gonna be different routines, so we can't take that uh, point away. And I think families are starting to visualize what that's gonna look like, and we can talk families through that as well. If they need to verbally talk through it, they can call at any time and we can explain that even further.
Roger that. Um, and then, and then what about the, about, about cleaning the buildings? Like, what's that?
First question, yes, the healthcare team, um, they have different things or on different schedules in terms of the cleanliness, all based on Summit County Public Health. And that will be uh tracked very carefully and monitored. Uh, the team has already been talking about that. And a lot of those routines are already in place because we have people in the buildings now. We have teachers teaching from the buildings, we have kids coming up uh to pick up supplies, to pick up lunches, we have child nutrition workers every day, we have custodians in the building. Um, it's just the, the frequency may need to increase, but that's all on a schedule that they've already mapped out and talked through.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay, two, two more quick things here. Um, uh, one, I would talk about parents needing, uh, having a time to, to pick their kids up. Um, I, I know from touring buildings earlier this year that their, that their parents who don't come pick up their kids now, you know, pre-COVID, you know? Um, so it's nice, it's all fine to say that you have a time, you have a time to pick your kids up. But, but when they don't pick their kids up, and then, and there'd be parents who don't, you know, I'm wondering what we're gonna do about that. And then secondly, we talked about COVID symptoms. I think that what we're, I think, as I was mentioning, that we're not conflating a couple of different things here, you know? COVID, symptoms for COVID, there's a lot of overlap in symptoms between COVID and the flu and allergies and the common cold. And a kid that just runs to school without, with his coat on button the entire time, he's, he's gonna get to school and have a flush face, a runny nose and probably coughing a little bit, and that's all gonna look like COVID. And I, I, I had a, I had a, I had a parent use the term that, that with cold and flizzies, and we're getting ready to enter what, what this parent called the Salem witch trials. You know, where every time there's a cough or cold, COVID, 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 get you out of here, get, get this kid out of here, COVID, COVID, COVID. You know, and so, so I, you know, I, you know, again, I'm just, I'm saying this, I'm sharing feedback, right? I'm not, I, I'm not assigning a value judgment here, the way I'm just saying, I'm sharing feedback. This is what, this is what I'm hearing, right? And so, and so, again, I work in healthcare, you know, I, I, I know that the symptoms overlap. And so we're not gonna be able to tell, you know, uh, what, what we think looks like COVID may not, in fact, and actually probably won't be COVID in a lot of cases, more, many more cases than that, right? Uh, but we don't, but we don't, until and unless we have rapid testing, we're not gonna know. So, you know, on any given day, you could have 75 kids, you know, being lined up to go, you know, to, to, to the room where, you know, either COVID room, right? I mean, so, yeah, so to me, I just, I'm just wondering about, as we sort of think through this, kind of the, the practicality. Um, hell, there, there were buildings that was torn in January, February, that were a third to a half empty. That's pre-COVID, you know, it was just during weather cold and flu season, the kids didn't even come to school. You know, so, so I, again, I just, you know, so that's what I'm saying before, I, I, I just want, I just wanna make sure, again, uh, you know, so make sure that as we think over our plans the next week or two, that, that those, that we're taking that, taking that into consideration as well. And then last but not least, um, you know, um, yeah, um, we talked about the 28 intervention specialists that were um, that had applied, that, that people had applied for this after-school approach. Um, you know, so do we, are all those spots filled? And, and, and I, I think that those, those, those jobs are only available to internal candidates. Um, are they, um, are we, are we, are we, do we think that we're gonna need more positions? And are we open to hiring from outside the district? That's my, um, that's my last question.
Uh, because the families just had till today to respond, and then we're gonna do some phone follow-up um, the next few days, just because we, we wanna make sure that parents didn't miss the survey or families didn't miss the survey. Um, we'll be able to then see how many students and therefore how many intervention specialists will we need? Right now, it looks like we have plenty to be able to fill the need. But I, we won't know until we get through the next few days as we do um additional follow-up with the families.
Great, great, thanks. I appreciate you answering my questions. Um, you, you mentioned the remote plus learning, you, you, this hypothetical remote plus model, I think you mentioned that. Um, I, I love to see us, you know, um, you know, in, in, in time for that export, maybe to kind of, to kind of have a chance to kind of look at, look, you, you see what that would look like. You know, um, cuz again, we have kids who are going to that four to seven, I'd love to see what a remote plus model will look like, you know, um, and. Yeah, but.
What I'm hearing walking away uh from this meeting and the superintendent certainly, um, his goal for this meeting was for us to put the blended model out, he, get your feedback and then go, we knew we were gonna have additional work to do as a follow-up. What I'm hearing are two important um uh next steps for our teams. And Ms. Shipe and I will figure out how we'll work through this, but the first one is to look at that uh, remote plus, you know, if we stay remote. So we've presented, here's what we wanna do for blended. Now we'll look at that 100% remote um model and say, if we stay 100% remote, what enhancements could we do to address uh the students who aren't being successful in the remote right now? And how can we shore that up? Um, and come back with that. A second piece that I heard that you, that collectively the board is asking for is that phased in, what could that look like if we either phased in the blended? Or when we look at this remote plus, by nature, is that what it's gonna end up looking like is a phased in type approach? I do um agree that our, that Ms. Shipe said earlier, right now, our blended, the high school is somewhat of a phased in because they're wanting to stay remote but do some intervention support for students in the afternoon. Um, so that really is kind of a model right now for us to look at for how do you stay remote but do some support? Um, that I think if we look at both of those charges together, we can come back and present at the next meeting a plan um, that addresses both of those.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKittrick.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of, of follow-up questions and then some bits of information that I'm passing along from emails and phone calls I've had from parents and teachers. So, um, as far, as far as drinking fountains, will those be turned on? And if they are not turned on, will water be supplied for the kids? Or will they be able to bring in their own? Um, a couple of other things. Will the kids be allowed to put things in lockers? Um, will fire tornado and safety drills still happen? Will, um, and then what if a family member cannot pick up a child within 60 minutes? What exactly will happen? How are we gonna manage that? And then finally, I will just add a comment of my own that I, I appreciate the idea of layering in smaller groups at a time. And I will leave that now for any answers you might have. Thank you.
I can address the water fountains. There are two types of water fountains. There are in-classroom water fountains and those will be locked off. We will not be using them. Public hallway water fountains will be used. They are going to be used with an individual service cup student with a one-time use to be thrown away in the trash can next to it. Or students would be allowed and encouraged to bring their own water bottles so that they could fill them. Uh, this, I'm sorry, can you ask me what other ones, Ms. McKittrick, you asked about? I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's all right. I asked about if the kids would be allowed to use lockers or cubbies and.
No, lockers and cubbies are not allowed. All items individual to a student will go directly to their desks. And that is a recommendation that really comes out of the CDC and has been supported by Summit County Health.
Thank you. What about um fire tornado and safety drills? How would those be carried out when, especially for um tornado drills, you know, you, the kids have to, I don't know if there's enough room to keep them spaced and, and do those kinds of drills.
All right, they are still required. There has been no change by the fire code or the fire department. So let's go with the first one for fire drills. If they are pulled and they are mandated at least once a month, a drill would be pulled, you would follow directly, your masking, wearing, going out directly. At that point, the social distancing is, is kind of overridden by the fact you are trying to teach the children to evacuate immediately to the local part of their assigned outside space with their supporting teacher. For, those are one of those things that we still are required to do. What is required is if we go to a blended learning model where we have students coming in, say, on Monday, Tuesday, and a different group on Wednesday, Thursday, we are required to perform those with each group. So instead of once a month, we could be doing two a month. And that has been already mandated by the fire department. And this is at the state level. Tornado drills still have to be done. But again, it is the fact that we have to explain to children in an emergency situation exactly how to go and do a tornado drill. They would be, especially in a blended model with smaller groups, it will be easier to take them with their masks, show them where to do exactly what they need to do in the effective manner in the location they are supposed to go. Since you're on drills, we are required to perform the same evacuation drills on the buses for students that are on buses. And those are also mandated to removal from the front, removal from the back and removal in between. So those will also be required. None of those waivers have been taken into place.
If we could. I wanna make sure Dr. Akbar is signed back in. Hold on just a moment, please.
While we're waiting, the other question Ms. McKittrick asked was about students who didn't. Students.
Dr. Dr. Hall, if you could wait just a moment, please.
And thank you, the benefit of the public too. Uh, under Ohio Attorney General guidelines, anytime one of our board members drops off the meeting, we are required to pause the meeting until that member is able to rejoin, so we are not allowed to continue discussion or questions. Uh, but he has let us know that he is trying to sign back in, so he should be on in just a moment.
I'm trying to think of a good joke. It doesn't violate any O R C codes here. Um, can't think of one, though. I'll have one prepared for the next board meeting, though.
Maybe about four-hour board meetings.
Right. Man walks into a four-hour board meeting. And, uh, no, no. Didn't quite, didn't quite fit. I suspect discussing the Cleveland Browns four and one record is probably also off limits, cuz, just because there's gotta be an O R C that we're gonna jinx them, that we talk about them being four and one for the first time since I was a senior in high school. So, 20, 26 years ago, for those of you who wanna know exactly how old I am, okay? So.
Sorry, now I'm speaking with my, uh, mic muted. Uh, Dr. Akbar, welcome back. Uh, Dr. McWilliams Woods, I cut you off, my apologies, please go ahead.
I was just gonna say that the um the examples of the health questions that are coming, those are perfect questions um that we can keep adding to this list for our families and uh, post on our website as well, but add on this document. Um, some of the questions we've hit, but I think we can tweak the language a bit to make sure that we're answering those specifically um, that Mrs. McKittrick answered and any of the health things. The more we can put that in writing to families to make sure that they have it and see it over and over. And it's not just one word verbal response, or they heard it someplace, but they can actually see it in writing. I think that would be um helpful. So any future questions that you got like that, just be sure to shoot them either to Mrs. Folk or myself, and we'll add them to that list.
Good, thank you.
Follow-up to anything I have is, um, what about the. what about the kiddos whose parents can't come get them within that 60-minute timeframe? Because it's sure for some of our parents who just can't maybe leave work.
Sure, sure. And every school has previously had to have a plan for that. And the same logic will apply, you know, that we will do everything we can to have the family come pick them up. We do have security staff that can help assist either picking up the family to come and get them or bringing them home. We obviously want to do that safely. But we have already been in discussions with how each building is going to work that through. And Mrs. Folk has asked everybody to have a plan. You know, what happens? How do we continue to isolate the student if the family can't pick them up? What do we do to get the student back safely using the resources that we have?
Thank you.
One of the other advantages I just want to mention, and we are unique in Akron compared to all of the other districts. But remember when we looked at the, the 130-some districts in this, schools and districts in this region, that we have a lot of models and a lot of information that we learned from these other schools prior to with all of these details that, that is helpful, that we get to hear all of that information to be able to have that information move forward. We also have the great advantage of having the other Ohio Eights are also having dates ahead of us. So we're going to be able to learn from them as well. So I don't think there's going to be anything that someone else hasn't already figured out that you've mentioned that we can learn from our colleagues in our other districts.
Good, thank you, Dr. McWilliams Woods. I don't see anyone else lined up in the chat. Are there any questions? If not, I haven't asked or shared any of my own. So if the board will permit me just a minute. You know, I want to just mention something too, and that Dr. Hall had actually brought up a few minutes ago. And we talked about this a little after we, the June 29th blended option was presented and the board decided that we would start the year remotely. We talked about setting the bar and and I had said too, that I'm in favor anytime if we feel the need as a board to raise that bar. But, but really the responsibility then falls on us to figure out what that new bar is so that we know as a community, what to expect and when to expect it. And, and that is something that we do need to get back to in terms of the public health data and where we are as a community and as a state and as a country. But more specific to us locally and as, and maybe as a state and sort of where is that bar and what we're looking at. From my personal point of view, if the, if we choose not to adopt the blended model that's being presented to us tonight, I too have a real concern around some of our populations, particularly our K-3 population, our special ed population, those students that need interventions, which Dr. McWilliams Woods referred to, or even those students who may need certain enrichment opportunities. What I'd be curious to know from the board, and maybe just briefly, if you have a single thought, because I know it's getting late. But we'll pick up this conversation again, either in our next board meeting or even a special meeting before that. What I would be interested to know from the board, and again, maybe just a single thought or comment or piece of data. What is it, what other information would help you make a decision as we continue this discussion? And, you know, if you could just kind of, you know, I'll trust that everyone can kind of jump in and again, just briefly a comment or a piece of data, something that would help you.
I'll jump in. Three things. One, I think we're definitely going to need a special meeting. Number one. Number two, I think we should be looking at the number, well, one of the things, right? We'll be looking at the number of cases, new cases that are the result of community spread, positivity rates. And then I think we also have to make sure that we're talking with Ms. SCOTDA about testing availability and capability. So those are my quick thoughts.
Thank you, Dr. Hall. And also I want to mention that it's clear, I think we all would like to see from Ms. Shipe, the AEA survey, which I think everyone has expressed would be important feedback. Who else? What else can our staff provide that would help you make a decision? Anyone else?
Final question. You mean making a decision with regard to going back to 100% remote if the, if the rate should increase?
No.
Decision period regarding whether or not we, we choose one of these models?
Yes, what the staff has brought us is a blended model, should we decide to go back to a blended model? And so my question to the board is, what wasn't presented tonight? Or what additional information would you need if we came back in say another week or two weeks at the most at our next meeting? And, and and that was put to a vote? What, what information do you need to help make that decision?
For me, I would like to see a plan that, that layers in smaller groups. I would like to see a K through two, maybe three model and including that the special needs kids.
Thank you.
And for me, I think everything that both Dr. Hall and Ms. McKittrick just pretty much laid out. But I would add besides, I think the teacher, the AEA survey results will be very critical to my decision-making. And honestly, it probably will be one of the heaviest weighted parts of my decision. So no pressure. But I think we also, if we have that campaign or some type of information around what we're going to the common message, one of those habits around the culture that we need to build. Having that come laid out will be important and will help me make a decision. And then the last thing, I think that when, with the information that Derek mentioned, I'm also interested in overlaying that with health disparities and looking at specifically our students, our English learners, learner students, as well as those who are high poverty, high needs and racially diverse.
Mr. President, I would echo a lot of what Ms. McKittrick said. Especially that K-3, we talked a little bit about reading and possibly getting them in and layering that in. Also, I think it's vitally important that we start really considering graduation because, and the high school model that was presented tonight really is mostly remote with getting those CTE and lab kiddos in. That's going to affect graduation. And at this point, we're talking about, I, I think with those special needs kids, with those K-3s and with, with graduation, we're talking about life-altering situations here. We're talking about situations that could delay your graduation. We're talking about delays in, in reading comprehension and learning to read, learning your words in a window that closes. So I think that trying to get those students in as much as possible on, on some level. And then again, as Dr. McWilliams Woods mentioned, there are some that we're just not hearing from. There are some students out there that we have got to get inside at, at some level, getting some kind of intervention because they they could slip through the cracks despite all of our best efforts. They're not connecting online or online isn't connecting with them. How about, how about that? As much as their, their teachers are trying, it, it doesn't work for them. And there are some that are thriving and doing so well on this because our teachers have worked so hard and have created and worked so hard to, to learn this and to get a system in place. But some kids, it's just not working for. So I think those are the, the folks that I'm most concerned about. And if somehow we can get them in at, in some levels, layering them in or filtering them in, find the word. Dr. Akbar, what did you say? I told you, you trademarked it earlier today. Phased in. What was it? We're, it's too late tonight. I can't think anymore. Phased in blended. I told him he could trademark it because it was so good. But those are the, those are my highest concerns tonight and things that I would like to see is a way that we could do that.
Thank you. And before I move us along, Ms. Autry or Mr. Alexander, anything that would help you make this decision in the next week or two that wasn't presented tonight?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I think my fellow board members mentioned just about everything that I would agree with. But for me personally, I am most concerned. And what's probably going to help me make the decision is the survey results from AEA because the teachers are the ones who are dead smack in the middle of all of this, who have to make it work. And they have families too. And they have concerns too. I heard a lot from them. So I want to hear more from, from, you know, from them. But also I would be in support of a phased-in approach with a focus on K through three. And, and thank you, Mrs. Mansfield, for mentioning our older students, particularly our seniors, because they're often, you know, not considered just because they're older. But you're right, they are absolutely at a pivotal time and need focus as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Autry.
Yes, Mr. President, the, the survey, as mentioned earlier, you know, maybe a little bit more. Oops, I'm sorry. I thought I was, had myself on, sorry. I, I, I agree with the survey from the teachers because I'd like to hear more from them. The science, I need to hear more from science and getting more from there as well. And then, you know, of course, some, some phase in as to what we can do is safe, safe phase in. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thanks. And for me, I might like to see just an example, and I know it wouldn't have to be exact, but what those bubbles would look like when, when the, the point and counterpoint were made earlier about bringing back 21,000 students. I just did some very rough math and I know it's not perfect, but we're talking 21,000 students roughly, again, not perfect. 60% of those said that they would go online or at least 60% of the 15,800 responses roughly, which is about 12,600 students, which would be split in half to 6,300 students, which would be spread out roughly over 45 buildings, which is about 140 students per building on average. And so to the point about we are bringing back a lot of students, but they are in their own bubbles. If we went with a blended model, we'd just be curious to see how that would break down since I think you've already sort of done that work to some degree. Cluster by building, just to see what that kind of looks like. Because it is a, it is a valid concern that we're, maybe we have done so as well as we have locally for as long as we have because we are a big contributor and a large community within this community that has remained safe or as safe as we can be. And so there is a concern bringing back that number of students. But at the same time, when you break it down, it does seem like they are much smaller bubbles than when you think about all enrollment. So I might like to see what those bubbles sort of look like. And then just leaving us, our, our board and our staff with a parting thought. And first of all, thank you all. Thanks for the presentations. Kudos again to everyone that put so much into this. We have the utmost respect for all of the work that you did in this blended model. And every single time this board has asked, those committees have stepped up and put in the work. And we truly respect and appreciate that. The questions that we ask are really just to learn more. We're, we're looking at this from a different view and, and just want to know more and want to know that we're making the best decision that we can. If we choose not to go with a blended model and we stay remote, obviously that puts us remote learning into January. I, I question whether or not we'll be in a much different place in January than we are in October. It may be worse. I don't necessarily expect that it will be, but it could be. But I don't necessarily expect that it will be any better either. And without the bar sort of being set, as we said before, I don't wonder if, if we were in the same position or relatively the same position, would we then choose remote for the third quarter? And in all likelihood, if we chose remote for the third quarter, would we bring students back for the final quarter? And so there's a lot to consider here at this sort of this first quarter point for our board and our staff to consider around this decision because it gets obviously less and less likely and more and more difficult to bring students back the further we get into the year. So anyway, just something to think about. Again, appreciate all of your comments. I am going to move us forward at this point because we do still have some business left for this board.
Comment, Mr. President.
Yes, absolutely, Mr. Superintendent. You've been so quiet.
So I would propose I'll talk to Dr. McWilliams Woods and Ms. Shipe about, you know, could we give a, maybe we can do a special board meeting potentially next week, maybe on Monday. I, I think there's a finance committee meeting Monday as well. But maybe, you know, present some quick ideas on what, you know, something between a fully blended model and, you know, going to what, you know, I've heard this evening with. Yeah, I like the high school model where they're still doing remote, but we have the opportunity for kids to come in and do some targeted work, do their career tech credential work and some of their experiential learning work. And, you know, somewhere with that. You know, the problem is if we're looking at, you know, what are some of the, I talked to Donna Scoder today who has reached out and talked with some of our local experts. The science is very, I think, you know, for the most part, well-understood in terms of what, how it impacts us in terms of infection rates. If we go with the current model where we have a red, orange, you know, yellow, you know, the different levels. We see that, you know, two weeks ago, the majority of the state, I think, was yellow. Now the majority, I think the figure was 92% of our counties are either orange or red. So even if we go to something like that, to say if we're red, we're going to be all remote. Some of our sister urban districts have done things like that. But, you know, the problem is when you're moving and, you know, one way to another, the infection rates in Summit County are increasing currently. And 44310 is a hotspot. The problem of looking at it just by zip codes is I would love to see more of a, you know, where GIES could pinpoint where those clusters are. That won't happen, you know, because of, you know, being able to identify where they are. But it's just some things that we'll have to work through. But the problem is going to be, as Dr. Hall pointed out, we're going into cold and flu season. And that is going to be a very difficult time, I think, for us to get through because people are going to just, for anyone who's going to be in person, people will assume that it's COVID and will have a lot of panic. Some of my fellow superintendents have already had some issues with that. So I would like to try and work with you and the vice president, work with staff and our teachers to come up with a, you know, a quick look at how that could work and maybe present it as early as next week, just so there's time to review that and have a discussion and answer any questions.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And whoever said it earlier. And whoever said it earlier was right. I mean, you know, even based on the survey, if we make one decision, we're going to have 60% of the people who are satisfied and maybe 40% who are not, or the other way around. And if the AEA survey follows similar lines one way or the other, it's going to be the same thing. These are difficult decisions no matter what, and there is no right decision. I think Ms. Shipe may have even said that there's no perfect decision. There's no right decision. We will try and do our best to make the best decision that we can with the information we have. But again, thank you all for tonight. We really appreciate it. Thanks for staying late. I'm going to move us along now. There is no president's report. You're welcome. Treasures report?
No report.
Thank you. Committee reports, legal contracts and board policy.
I'm going to make this real quick. We had a meeting on October 5th. President was Dr. Akbar, Dr. James, President Bravo, Mr. Pendleton, and we had Mrs. Falk as well as Josh Allen. And I'm not going to go into the policies because those policies will be read again. They were read for the second reading at the meeting. They will be read again after I get done going through this. We talked about the naming policy. We looked at the policy. Dr. James has looked at some other policies as well, other districts. And we kind of have a decent, well, we set us a deadline that we're going to try to get this here done sometime in November. We also talked about, I'm sorry, along with that, we're going to probably have some administrative guidelines because the policy is okay, but the administrative guidelines will drive the process of when you have naming. So we're going to have administrative guidelines to go with that, the policy. We talked about the racial equity policy. It was really good. Mr. Pendleton talked about section 6000 policies, which he's going to look at how the policy, policy, or actually the business, his office, Treasurer's Office can implement some of these things. But he has to make sure they will go along with the state federal guidelines as well as our other guidelines that we have for finances. And he wants to make sure we're able to reach those benchmarks that we may want. Dr. James also mentioned that he is looking at a position, a chief of diversity officer in the district, and he's working on some things on that and think that would be a good idea for us to have someone to help drive some of this work. And also with the racial, with the racial equity policy, also having maybe some administrative guidelines to go along with that. Josh Allen did jump in and he said he would like to read the policy because he would like to look at some data that they may have down in student services that, how this policy can kind of help them as well. So we ended at five, we started five, our meeting started about 4:40 and we ended at 5:42. That was our policy meeting. Now what we have for this evening, for our third and final reading, we have revised policy 5200 attendance, revised policy 5610.03, emergency removal of students, revised policy 5610, removals, suspension, expulsion and permanent exclusion of students, policy 5611, due process rights, policy 6325, procurement, federal grants funds, new policy 8450.01, protective facial covering during pandemic slash epidemic events, revised policy 3216, staff dress and grooming, policy 4216, staff dress and grooming, revised policy 52511, dress and grooming, revised policy 8420, emergency situations at school, and finally revised policy 8500, food services. These are your third readings of these policies and we move that they are accepted as read. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Hall and Ms. McKittrick. As we open it up for comments, questions and discussions, I just want to say one quick thing. I want to give kudos again to Mr. Alexander and Dr. Akbar on the, around the racial equity policy discussions. I mean, absolutely brilliant discussions, a really excellent policy coming together and one that really puts us as a leader across the country around racial equity. And so I just have to give props again to Dr. Akbar and Mr. Alexander for their work on this and encourage our board, if you haven't had an opportunity yet to get through the policy and to come up with comments or questions or feedback, please do so while our administrative staff is also still working on that. And something, just one other comment. Dr. Akbar kept popping into my head throughout the huddle event with the LeBron James Family Foundation last week. And it really got me thinking. And it was around the term minority in our lexicon and removing the term minority from our lexicon. And there was a speaker who came dangerously close to talking about that in one of the sessions, one of the panelists. And I really wanted to jump up and raise my hand and take all the credit for saying, yes, yes, we absolutely have to do that. But when you think about it in terms of our district too, in a district that is majority minority, I'm not really sure who we're referring to when we say minority. So it does kind of drive home the point that in a majority minority district, minority doesn't really apply unless you're talking about white students. And so I think, you know, there is something to be said for removing that from our vernacular, from our lexicon of, you know, we're not really talking about minority. We're talking about diversity. We're talking about, and maybe we need to come up with a better way of talking about that. But I just wanted to say, Dr. Akbar, you were in my thoughts last week at this conference. So kudos to you for bringing that to our attention even ahead of a national conference. So with that, any other comments, questions or discussions on these policies?
Mr. President, I just want to quickly just applaud the commentary and the work that's being done by Dr. Akbar, Mr. Alexander, Dr. James, not just in respect to the policy development, but also with respect to the discussion around bringing on a chief diversity and equity officer. I think DEI is super important and I think it's integral. And I think honestly, I think it just adds something else to Dr. James' legacy. You know, to be the one, I think it's more than appropriate that he be the one that, 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 you know, takes us, you know, that much closer to the promised land in helping us to bring on a chief DEI person to the district. So I just want to say thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions or discussion?
I just have one and then I think we need to move forward. So I just also want to acknowledge that the chief diversity officer role and title and probably in the way in which it will be positioned will be different. But the district has long had a diversity officer and director. And Carla does an amazing job in my discussions with her and different committee meetings, as well as even with her presentation to the board at a few moments or a few meetings, I should say. So I don't, I don't want to make it seem like we just have been absent in that discussion and that role. I think it's elevating the role and permeating it throughout the district and everything that we do.
Well said, Dr. Akbar. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Finance and capital management?
We'll be meeting on Monday. There's no report today.
No report. You're all welcome.
Instructional policy and student achievement. I think you gave us our report tonight.
Yep.
Thank you so much. There is no unfinished business or new business to come before this board, but there is a need for a brief executive session pursuant to Ohio revised code section 122.22G1 for the purpose of considering the employment and compensation of a public employee or official of the school district. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. A motion by Mr. Alexander, second by Ms. McKittrick. When we do recess into executive session, again, we'll ask everyone or just remind everyone to please completely exit out of this meeting before you enter executive session. And we will have one brief item to consider when we return. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Australian?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see you in executive session. Good evening and welcome back. We are returning from executive session to the regular meeting of the Akron Public Schools Board of Education for Monday, October 12, 2020. We do have one final item on the agenda for consideration by the board. It is the item number 32.1, a resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding between the Akron Board of Education and the Akron Education Association. We'll entertain a motion at this time.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion from Ms. Mansfield and a second from Ms. McKittrick. Any final comments, questions or discussion on the resolution? Hearing and seeing none, roll call, please.
Dr. Hall?
No.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yeah.
Dr. Akbar?
I'm staying.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
No.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Being that there is no other business to come before this board, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. We are adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.
Good night.
Good night. Sleep well.